Hello and welcome to today's candidate forum featuring candidates for Galt City Council. In this election, two seats are open for election. My name is Tricia Urhammer. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Sacramento and it's my pleasure to be moderating today's forum. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Sacramento and Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission. The forum is being viewed live in the Sacramento County Board of Supervisor Chambers and by a live cable television audience at home. It is also being taped for rebroadcast times on Channel 14. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan nonprofit organization of both men and women, established to promote political responsibility through informed active participation in government at all levels. The League does not support, oppose, or evaluate political candidates or parties. The forum, the format for today's forum will be as follows. Each candidate will be offering up to a 90-second opening statement, followed by a question-and-answer period in which each candidate will have one minute for answers. Finally, each candidate will be able to offer a closing statement. Now it is my pleasure to introduce the candidates for today's forum featuring Galt City Council candidates. To my far right, Paige Lamson. Sheri Daly. And to my left, Kurt Campion. Welcome and thank you for joining us today. Also running for city council is Mel Shamblyn, who is not with us today. We will move to the question-and-answer period. The questions have been submitted by the newspapers in Galt and Lodi and be reviewed by the League of Women Voters. First, through a draw of straws, the first question or the opening statement will go to Paige Lamson. Paige?
Thank you, Tricia, and the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. My name is Paige Lamson and I moved to Galt 15 years ago because we wanted to raise our kids in a safe environment where they had the opportunity to attend good public schools. I come from a long line of public servants. My father was a, is a retired policeman and my mother worked for the probation department for many, many years. I am employed locally. I own my own home and I have a Bachelor of Arts from the University of Pacific. I love the Galt community and I'm very impressed with the improvements that have been brought about by the city council over the last 15 years and I want to help that process continue. It was not on my radar to run for Galt City Council, but I was asked by numerous people and took up the thing and thought I would run. I had to be a little brave and I'm a little nervous, so forgive me for that. So I'm running to secure the economic future for our children and I understand the economic difficulties of our local businesses. I'm a positive person and I'm a people person and I have the ability to reach out and get more people involved. I have the opportunity to hear the needs of the people and I'm very approachable with a flexible schedule. I'm available to any individual and will have an open-door policy if I'm elected to city, to city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Sheri Daly.
Hello, my name is Sheri Daly and I want to tell you a little bit about myself today. You'll have plenty of time to hear about my thoughts about policy through the next 45 minutes. I've lived in Galt for 24 years. I'm married to my wonderful husband of 25 years and raised my three kids in Galt. I love this town. I love what it gave my family and I would like to give back to it. Some of the things I'd like to work on are safe routes to school, bringing our kids and our community and our families together and more events to make us a closer community. Of course, I want to concentrate on public safety. As a founding member of the Measure R Committee, I was responsible for helping bring hundreds of thousands of new tax dollars to our city to support our police department and I'm very proud of that. I'm currently the Chair of the Planning Commission. I've been a planning commissioner for six years in Galt. I also worked on the Galt Master Plan for Parks, which decided how our parks will be rolled out in the next 20 years. I am also the Chair and founder of Galt Coalition for Delta College, which strives to bring the Delta College Satellite Campus nearby on the south of our border of the city. I would like to help the city in the future be the city that my children grew up in. I plan on living here the rest of my life. I plan on retiring here as my mother and my mother-in-law have. I'd like to see some grandchildren someday grow up in this town. So it's very important to me that the way that citizens want the city to develop is kept in mind as we move forward and I will do my best to make sure that the future of Galt resembles what my children grew up in. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Kurt Campion.
Thank you, Tricia. I have been a resident of Galt for over 25 years and genuinely care for the well-being and success of our community. When I started working for the city of Galt in 1985, Galt had few economic resources. Since that time, I've been directly involved in almost every development that's occurred in our community. I believe that I have influenced positive changes in the community and was instrumental in many of Galt's developments, including the Galt Industrial Park, Rayleigh Shopping Center, Save Mart, as well as the Walmart Shopping Center. These developments, as well as many others, have created jobs, revenue, and needed services for the benefit of our community, which is the essence of economic and community prosperity. I have been and continue to be passionate about the city of Galt, my home. My goal is to continue to build its economic base, keep the community safe, continue to build collaborative relationships within the community, and keep our financial picture secure and transparent, as well as addressing ongoing needs of the community. I believe my education, work experience, serving as an elective official, having a comprehensive understanding of the city's operation, being well-versed on city budgets, administration, planning, and economic development, makes me an excellent choice for a seat on the city council. I am dedicated to this community and have embraced all of my responsibilities as your council member for the past four years. I'm proud to say that I have been completely prepared for every council meeting and thoroughly understand all agenda items and matters under consideration
Thank you.
by the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the question-and-answer portion at this time. So the first question I will ask first of Paige. What are the most important issues facing the city of Galt? And if elected, how would you prioritize addressing these issues?
Some of the very important issues we have are our declining school enrollment, our growing senior population, and if elected, I would like to continue to foster better communication and better partnerships with the school districts, make sure our students in Galt continue to get that wonderful education and move on to college or career, whatever they're looking for. Our senior population is growing and I would love to see the proposed community center also turn into a senior citizen center at the same time and we have meals on wheels and continue to get things to help our seniors to get around and to doctors and just really work with that population on what they're looking for.
Thank you. Sheri?
Yes, I think the number-one issue that faces Galt as a community is its plan for future development. I've been walking door to door for a month now and participating online in social media, talking with the voters about what concerns them, and the number-one concern that I hear is what will happen to Galt in the future? Will we be in Elk Grove? Will we have massive growth that outstrips our need to be a community? So that's the highest on their minds and I'm proud to say that I have taken no contributions from developers. My voice for the voters of Galt will be my voice only. In addition to that, I've heard many concerns about safe routes to school. People are concerned about the traffic on the streets where their children are going to school. They're also concerned about deterioration of certain neighborhoods, about blight that is happening in our common areas, and about upkeep so that our city stays strong and doesn't start to fall apart in certain areas. And also a general feeling that we need to keep our communities together as a community, a feeling of the town that we came to live in needs to go into the future.
Thank you. And Kurt?
Thank you. I look at what Galt faces really in the area of economic development and new development. The city needs to be able to attract those types of businesses and new development that provide a revenue base for the city and at the same time provide employment. The community now, we have a large commuter population, both north and south of the community, and I think it's important that we look at attracting those businesses that can provide jobs in the community. Additionally, I think another very important aspect is Delta College. I think Delta College coming to Galt would provide needed opportunities, not only for the existing population, but the surrounding population, but it also benefits the community to the extent that you have a more educated community and that has a tendency to invite in new development as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question really deals with water and water rates. With the recent water rates fully underway now and with public dismay regarding how they were implemented, what changes, if any, will you fight for when the rates come before the council for review next year? And what will be your solutions? And this first, this question will go first to Sheri.
Yes, I hear a lot about water rates and people's concern and sometimes the concern is not the small increase that we, that we saw with this last increase that came through. Actually, our water rates are lower than all of the surrounding communities, so I think the city has done a good job of trying to keep those water rates low. I think what people have concerns about is a continual increase. Will we have enough water? Will our plant be, have enough capacity to meet new needs? And how will that be affected when new development comes? Will new development raise my bill when it comes? So the rate review that will come in the future, I will be very involved with. One thing that I like to look at is disparity. For instance, our senior parks, someone who is living in a mobile home and has no landscaping is being charged the same flat rate as a family would be. So there are some disparities that I think we have an opportunity to look at when we review the rates this coming year and I would like an opportunity to get the public's input on that and to really listen to what their concerns are.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you. I think I was the only council member who was in opposition to the installation of the water meters. And the reason for that was very simple. We had over 10 years additional time to look to improve technology on the types of meters that were mandated by the state to be installed, but we had until 2026. So I thought it was premature in the part of the city to go through that expense to install the water meters when they did. That resulted in the increased rates. To the rate issue, I was the one that suggested to staff and the balance of city council that a rate review be conducted one year after the installation of the water meters in order to ensure that, that the city is not over-collecting in terms of revenue based on what the operational costs are for the water system, because that is the basis of the rate. Whatever services provided, that is the rate that can be charged. There can be no surplus. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige?
Currently, what happens with our water bill is there's a 60/40. 60% is the water meter and I believe 40% is the usage. There was a study and it was recommended to charge 40% water, water meter, and 60% usage. So with the 60/40 they're charging now, the people that are conserving water are not actually seeing a benefit to their bill. We do have the lowest water bill in five counties, though. But this will be, as Kurt said, reevaluated and recommended to the city council. So we need to find that correct calculation to sustain our water system and an analyst will figure that out and make a recommendation. I mean, it's very expensive to provide a water supply with the pharmaceuticals and everything else that's in the water for us to provide safe water, but, and the mandates and the regulations from the state change quite often, so that cost is incurred. But we do have a, I have been told, an adequate water supply and adequate storage.
Thank you. We go to the next question and it will first go to Kurt. Some of you have already mentioned the revitalization of downtown. How important is revitalizing downtown, the Fourth and C Street corridor particularly? And what are your ideas to attract more business to the area? And within that answer, if you could also answer, are you generally in favor of growth for Galt or not? So if you can address that, particularly revitalizing the downtown, but long-term growth in Galt in general?
I have been in favor of the revitalization of Old Town, which is how it's referenced in Galt, which is generally Fourth Street, Fourth and C Street area and along C Street up to Lincoln Way. The, the current plan is for revitalizing Fourth Street and provide a parking lot. As a matter of fact, at the last council meeting, council considered adding the parking lot because once you did the improvements on Fourth Street, you still don't have any off-street parking, which is what is really needed. That project was to be included as part of the improvements on C Street, all the way from basically City Hall, Highway 99, all the way down. However, with the lack of redevelopment funding, the city had to make a choice and we are focusing our efforts in the Old Town area. And the purpose for that is to provide additional venues and to provide attraction to the downtown in order to stimulate, stimulate economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige?
One of the things I've been looking for in my campaign and mentioning is the revitalization of downtown, excuse me. And it's, it's very important to me. I come from a small town where revitalization did not happen and the downtown kind of died and it was very much blight. So I'm very excited with some of the things the community has planned. We're, we're having some funding issues with getting some of the revitalization done. I've been talking to some of the property owners and business owners down there and they're very excited to bring events that would draw people from all around Galt to know what's down there and what's available, whether it's a car show or an antique show, a swap meet, things like that that would help get people down there. And we also want to see what we can do to help fill some of the empty businesses down there, the empty spots, and if there's anything that the council can do to help revitalize that area and bring in new business and make it easier for them to open.
Thank you. Sheri?
Yes, I love our downtown. I go there often. I love the atmosphere. I love the excitement. I love Barsetti's Tasting Room, Brewster's, all the restaurants down there, and I love the progress that has been made. I can say also that I was part of the progress that was made down there because I was a planning commissioner when we first approached Brewster's and we, we had to, on this wing and a prayer that Galt would support this, and I'm very happy with the way it turned out. I was also a planning commissioner when the D Street senior apartments went in, which kind of anchors a nice-looking building with nice facades and reduced-priced senior housing in that area, and I'd like to continue that sort of effort. I would love personally to see an amphitheater down there so that we could come out, buy a meal nearby, listen to some music or maybe a play, and stay in the area and shop and visit the local businesses in the area. So I have some exciting ideas for the downtown and the experience of having worked with some of the projects that went into the area and knowing what those owners felt about coming to the downtown and what they needed.
Thank you. The next question, I'm going to reverse the order of how, in what order you answer, so I'm going to ask this of Kurt first. Most cities face budget deficits and/or shortfalls, especially in these economic times. How would you address deficits or shortfalls? And please be specific. Would you be in favor of tax or fee increases or cutting programs? What, how would you resolve this problem?
Fortunately for Galt, we have a pretty healthy reserve, which is approximately $4 million in the general fund. And the general fund is the fund that, when you talk about deficits, that is principally the fund that is referred to. It provides all the revenue for your police department, your administration, and so it's very important that that fund remain healthy. That's your sales tax and your property tax. So I think by looking at improving your economic picture, you increase your tax revenue, both in terms of property tax and sales tax. The city fortunately is in good financial hands at this point and the financial future looks good. It doesn't mean that every fund doesn't need to be evaluated and that's done very carefully through the budget process. When, when, when fees are, or, excuse me, when a fund is in a deficit position, you need to look at, one, either reducing your costs or increasing your revenue. I'm not in favor of increasing taxes or revenue for any of those funds at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri?
Yes, my background, I actually have a Masters of International Management and a Bachelor's Degree in Business, so I know how to read balance sheets and understand budgets and understand organizational commitments to different parts of a budget. So I have that background. I also work for a nonprofit and as a manager in a strong nonprofit, I have learned how to save every penny that you can find. If it comes to squeezing the most out of a budget, there is no better experience than having worked for a nonprofit to have that experience, to really evaluate a budget and trim it where it needs to be trimmed. As for specifics, there are a couple of areas I would go to first. Currently, the council gets $1,000 a year, each council member, to give away of the taxpayers' dollars. I would end that the first day I go into office. I would also reevaluate how we assess giving away city services for our different fairs and events. Not saying that, that a group that has a mission that they're trying to accomplish in a nonprofit way shouldn't have to be charged high prices for doing that, but to stop those who are making $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 from city events and not having to pay for the infrastructure that goes to support them.
Thank you. Paige?
I was a member of a nonprofit international board that was on the verge of bankruptcy when I came on the board. And I worked very closely with a accountant that, I was the treasurer of the organization, that helped to bring that organization back to health and it's, it still continues today. I'm hoping that the new things that Galt has on the horizon, they are annexing in some of the north area for commercial and that that will bring in some more tax revenue so that we will not have the issues. We are in a healthy situation now, but sometimes, we all know that if you've been around a while the market, things happen with the market and the housing market goes up and down and that can affect all those services we have. But it's very important to me to continue our service to the nonprofits. It just adds to our quality of life in Galt that we have so many people so willing to help with so many things. And as a city council, I just want us to continue to do that.
Thank you. The next question addresses both the youth and seniors in Galt. Many feel that it is important for the city to have a senior citizen, a senior center. And also, although you have had upgrades to Walker Park for soccer demand in the area, what further recreational activities for the youth of Galt might be addressed if you are elected? So both youth and seniors. And this question is first directed to Sheri.
Okay, thank you. Well, I believe that we do need a senior center and I have heard a lot out on the campaign trail about the need for more activities for youth. I've been involved with youth activities from Galt Gators, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Cheer, you name it. I've been in the trenches helping to raise money for these different groups to provide interesting activities for children in our community. But as far as facilities go, those have to be budgeted and they have to be long-term budgeted and they have to be included in developer agreements when we put new growth into our community. So we need to make sure that, that new growth pays for its fair share of those types of facilities. New growth will help pay for Walker Park. We could earmark some of the money coming in from new growth to pay for a senior center. But we have to stand strong when we, when we look at how the impact of growth affects our community, that we are thinking ahead of those types of needs of the entire community so that there's actually money to do there. To say that you want it to happen is very different from following through with the plans needed to make it happen.
Thank you. Paige?
Okay. We, we have a huge array of activities already available. Some of the need might be to actually get the word out with art classes, ballet, cheer, tap, gymnastics, theater, football skills camps, horsemanship, karate. These are all offered by our Parks and Rec Department already, but we do need more fields. We have about 1,000 kids playing soccer. I've seen them bring lights into the parking lot by Burger King at night and practice in where all the cars park. So obviously, when we have these new developments coming, we must make sure the developers bring in parks and build. And I would also like to see maybe the city take over the Fairsite School facility and turn that into some more fields and more use for us. And of course, I already talked about the senior citizen center, that I would be thrilled if we can figure out a way to make that happen sooner than what is on the planned horizon.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you. I have worked on, when I worked for the city as the city's committee development director, the Parks Master Plan as well as the city's general plan. The Parks Master Plan was a document that was put together to assess the 20-year needs of the community in terms of park recreational activities and, most importantly, many of your organized field sports. Identification of these properties are within that document. Estimates are made in terms of need based on population increase and the, the increase in youth demographics. So I think you need to look at, at what you've planned for and stay on top of those documents and make sure that, you know, we are on pace with the improvements that are necessary to, to serve the population and then not only in the youth area, but also in terms of the seniors. They need to have activities and they need to have places for activities and I do support a senior center as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question I'll, I'll give first to Paige. And this deals with the school districts in Galt. Both school districts are seeking school bonds on November 8th. Do you favor these measures? And if passed, what is the impact on Galt City?
Okay. Most of the schools in Galt, if you were to walk and take a tour, are having issues with facility maintenance. 87% of the school's budget goes towards salaries. So that's what's left to maintain. There's, there's a lot of band-aids as they're trying to keep the air conditioners working. I was teaching in a class at the beginning of the year that was 97 degrees and I finally told them that I could not handle with my health being in a room that's 97 degrees. So our football fields that we have in Galt, they do not have an all-weather track. They don't have an all-weather field. It's embarrassing when I go to other towns and look at what they have and what they've done for their students. So I think it would be the best for the students in Galt if we pass these bonds and showed the kids that we do care about their education and we do care about the facilities that they have to learn in every day. And thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you. I attended the, the education summit put on by the two school districts as well as participation from Dr. Hart and Dr. Nelson from Sac State and Delta College. I, I was impressed with the, the delivery of the information and how education is woven into the fabric of a community and how it benefits that community. It was, it was very impressive and it brought home the, the identification of the needs that both school districts have identified in terms of their infrastructure necessitating replacement and/or improvement. So I think that, that, you know, aside from, you know, making it a, and it should be safe and it should be clean and in terms of the learner's facilities, the overall benefit is one that goes throughout the community and I do support the bond efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri?
Yes, simply put, quality schools equal quality communities. I completely support quality schools in Galt. And to show this commitment, our most recent general plan that was proposed to the planning commission this year included some shortages for school funding, particularly the education, the elementary school district estimated they would need $11 million to build a quality elementary school in the new plan. The developer put forth $4 million, which was explained to me by Dr. Karen Shower, the superintendent of the elementary school. superintendent of the elementary school district, that the state of California has stepped away from funding schools. So it is completely up to communities to negotiate with new development to make sure that schools are fully funded. $4 million was the legal amount that this developer was required to pay, and that was what he said he was willing to pay. Through my efforts on the planning commission, we were able to get that amount raised to $9 million, which will fund the elementary school that this development needs. But it was through strong negotiation and commitment to quality schools.
Thank you. I think we have time for one last question before we go to closing statements. What makes each of you particularly well-qualified for this position? And who are your supporters? Do you have the supporters of support of business? What about labor organizations? And who are your financial supporters? And for this question, I'll go first to Sherry.
Okay. I have a lot of supporters. I would call them the citizens of Galt, individuals who really care about the city of Galt. I also happen to have a lot of endorsements. I'm endorsed by Chief Catalico, who was our immediate past chief, Chief Doug Matthews, who was our chief for many, many years here in town, and Lieutenant Erickson. I am also endorsed by past planning commissioners and current planning commissioners, as well as former Mayor Timmerboy and Vice Mayor Don Haynes. So I have friends pretty much everywhere who's financing my campaign. You're looking at her. My family won't be going on vacation this year because I am using my own funds to pay for my campaign. I think it's very important that you have integrity, that money influence does not decide how you'll make decisions as a council member, and I feel strongly about that integrity that I bring to this office.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you. I worked for the city for over 25 years. I was the city's first planning director. I served as the assistant city manager, as well as the community development director. I have an intimate knowledge of the city and its operation. And I have, having lived there for over 25 years, I have a love for the community that probably many others do as well, but I also have, I believe, a very good understanding of how local government should run, and when it is not running right, what needs to be done to correct it. In terms of my supporters, it's broad-based. I have former council members, planning commissioners, family and friends who have made monetary contributions. I've also funded a large portion of my campaign as well. So I have a pretty broad-based of supporters and as well as endorsements. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige?
Well, this is my first time running for office. I've not had a lot of experience in the political arena. I have had a lot of life experience and working with people from all areas of life, and I try to see the good, that people have good intentions and not assume that people are trying to get one over on us. I have a lot of supporters from three current city council members, the mayor, the vice mayor. The last police chief we had was Bill Bowen, and he is supporting me. Assemblyman Jim Cooper, Terry Parker, Dr. Elizabeth Kaufman, Pastor James Seiler. There's more, but you can look on my website for that list. And, sorry. I just really am excited at this opportunity to serve the residents of Galt, and hopefully will have their ear and listen to what their needs and what their hopes are.
Thank you. I think we can squeeze in one more short question, and I'm going to keep this one pretty open. What question hasn't been asked that you'd like to address? And I think we'll keep it to 45 seconds each. And why don't we start with you, Kurt?
Thank you.
You think?
I know that there was a lot of talk earlier about the Indian Casino, and it appears as though that it is going in Elk Grove. But I think that that was an issue that is still out there for the city of Galt, to the extent that if negotiations are not completed in Elk Grove, the city has to be prepared in case a decision is made to come to Galt. And I think the city has taken the correct position to protect the long-term growth and development north of the city of Galt. And I believe that, my time's up.
Thank you. Paige?
That was quick, sorry. I would like to, I haven't had a chance to address the safety issues. I would like to work with our police department to see that they have up-to-date equipment. We don't have a lot of the equipment that some other police departments have, and I know that's costly. Also, our fire department is down a man, and with all the proposed things, the growth that Galt has already on the horizon, I would like to work with the fire district to get that man back down to, or woman, excuse me, down to Station 45.
Thank you. Sherry?
Well, I think a good question would be, how will you bring people together in Galt to accomplish your vision? And I would say on my part, that's what I do for a living. In Sacramento, I was a nonprofit and advocate at the Capitol. I specialize in bringing people together in one room and getting together over very controversial subjects and visionary plans. We work to bring better treatment of addicts throughout the state of California. And I'm good at bringing people together in a room and throwing out the rules and figuring out what's possible if we all harness our energy together as a group. And I think that I can do that with people. I've done it for 20 years in my career, and I think that would be really important, because we have a lot of great assets in this community, that if they could be brought together in one place and harnessed in a positive direction, there's no limit to what we can do.
Thank you. And that concludes the question-and-answer portion of this forum. I'd like to thank both the Galt Herald and the Lodi News Sentinel for submitting questions. We now move to closing statements. Paige, here first.
Thank you. I forgot to mention my community involvement. I was a member. I'm the treasurer of the CHAMP Committee, which built the Kevin Tom Memorial. I was a member of PAL, the Police Activities League, Kiwanis Historical Society Economic Development Task Force. In the next four years, I know it takes relationships to get things done, and I'm very good at relationships with all different kinds of people from different aspects. And like I said before, I look for the good in people. And I've run a very, very clean campaign. I have students that look up to me, and I signed documents when I agreed to run for office on how my behavior would be, and I want to continue to run my campaign in a positive way and hope that you will appreciate that. And if you elect me on November 8th, I will continue to strive to make Galt a city you love and a city your children will love.
Thank you. Sherry?
Well, just to reiterate the opening that I made, my experience is strong, being a planning commissioner for six years. My experience as an executive-level manager also makes me very qualified to watch the city's finances and treat your tax dollars like they're yours and not the city's or the council's. I think the selection, too, borrowing from the national scene, is a lot about integrity and trust. And the previous question about who's financing your campaign was asked, and two of the council members divulged who is financing their campaign, largely themselves and small donations. Ms. Lamson, however, failed to say that her campaign is being financed by developers. I think it's time that people expect transparency from their campaigns. They expect transparency and honesty from their council members. And I think that that's a mistake, to shuttle money through a committee up in Sacramento so that it can be hidden from the voters of Galt. It's just a really bad way to start a campaign, and I would hope people would take that into consideration.
Thank you. Kurt, you get the last word.
Thank you. As I've indicated today, I worked for the city of Galt for over 25 years in a variety of capacities. I have very intimate knowledge of the city and its operation, and I've worked on a number of the policies that have guided Galt's growth over the last 25 years. In addition to that, having served four years as your councilman, I believe that I have a still better understanding of the needs of the community and what our future needs will be. I have appreciate, or I do appreciate the support I've received. Would be honored to serve a second term on the Galt City Council. I have the knowledge, experience to start day one as an informed, committed, and effective council member. I would appreciate your support on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County and the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission, I want to thank all of the candidates here today for participating. And I also would like to take the opportunity to thank the many volunteers that it takes to make this forum possible. This forum has been designed to impart information to you, the voter, in accordance with our belief that a democratic government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We hope that the insights you have gained from this forum will aid you in making your decisions for November 8th. For voter information and rebroadcast times, please visit our Voter Edge website at www.voteredge.org, or the League of Women Voters of Sacramento County website at www.lwvsacramento.org. The League welcomes both men and women as members, and it is where hands-on work helps safeguard democracy and leads to civic improvement. Please remember to vote on November 8th and help make this democracy work. Thank you.